Next on the agenda, citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where the citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District can address the board and your questions, comments, concerns. I ask that you stand and state your name. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiry. Also be mindful, you may not receive a response to a particular inquiry here this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments. Second call, citizens comments. Last call, citizens comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, action item five. Consent agenda five, A, approval of minutes of one, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four special meeting. Two, June nineteen, twenty twenty-four, public hearing and proposed twenty twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-five budget. Four, three, June, June nineteen, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Five, B, approval of bills for payment. B, one, June, bills for payment. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
I move to support the consent agenda as given.
Moved by member Jay Walker to approve consent agenda. Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Dee Walker. I would like to pull from the consent agenda, item five, A, three. The June nineteen, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Send those back because those minutes are not complete. The chair would entertain a motion relative to, oh, excuse me. Are there any questions regarding the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda? Hearing saying none, call roll please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item six, human res- I'm, I, uh, item six, human res- resources, six, A, new hire, speech, speech and language pathologist. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Board, turn over to Mr. Lavenon.
This evening, the Mount Clemens administration recommends a higher hiring of Katie Brewer, speech and language pathologist. Katie Brewer is a speech and language pathologist, and we are recommending her hire to begin the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Katie successfully progressed through two rounds of interviews and positive reference checks. Katie has one year experience in a school setting and is eager to join our district to provide the best opportunities for our students as she will serve in order for them to grow and learn. Katie's caseload currently will include students from Saint Mary's, upper elementary students, and students with specific needs at the secondary complex. The board was sent her resume for review, and this evening, the Mount Clemens administration recommends the hiring of Katie Brewer, speech and language pathologist for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item six, A, new hire of a speech and language pathologist.
Support.
Moved by member Kahoon?
Support.
Second, member Jay Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? I got one question, Mr. Lavenon.
Yes.
This, this has been a very tough position for us to feel over the last few years. With this speech pathologist, is there a need, will there, will we still need an additional speech pathologist? And if so, what would be?
Yes, we could use actually two more. We are in the process that those postings have been posted for quite some time, as you mentioned. We are conducting interviews next week, and we actually have two more candidates who are speech and language pathologist certified with experience, who have committed to interviewing next week as well. In the meantime, we still have an agreement through parallel, who has been providing contracted services in this area.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing saying none, call roll please.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, informational items. Item seven, business made. Seven, A, financial reports. Any questions regarding the financial reports? Item seven, B, contract listings. Are there any questions regarding the contract listings? I know this was probably discussed at, discussed at the workshop last week. Hearing saying no questions, comments, or concerns, moving to agenda item eight, superintendent's comments. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. First thing I want to discuss is, I don't know if this is I'm asking the board to make a motion. We talked about the September board meeting, it's scheduled for September eighteenth. It'll be our first one of the school year, and I would like to be present, but I'll be out of the district on that day, so I want to look at moving that meeting date to up, following Wednesday, September twenty-fifth.
Superintendent is requesting to move the regular meeting, the regular September meeting from the third Wednesday to the fourth Wednesday in September.
Just for that time.
Yes.
Okay, does that again?
Sep- from the eighteenth, to moving it to the twenty-fifth.
Chair would entertain a motion?
I, uh, Mr. President, I move that we, um, uh, for the September twenty-twenty-fourth regular board meeting, that we move to the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, uh, just for the month of September.
Six thirty.
Six thirty P M. At this location.
Moved by member McFadden to change the September board meeting from the third Wednesday to the fourth Wednesday, which would be September twenty-fifth, six thirty P M. Uh, in this center. Second, member Dee Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing saying none, call roll please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Um, up next, I'll have the honor and pleasure of introducing our new secondary principal who's here tonight, Mr. Dennis Vile. You've heard a lot about him, um, and his background and where he's coming from. And I just wanted to introduce him formally. Mr. Vile, if you wanted to say a few things, maybe, maybe give him a quick overview of your experience and, and your background?
Sure. Again, Dennis Vile, uh, started as a teacher maybe about ten years ago, social studies teacher, history teacher in Atlanta, born and raised on the east side of Detroit, moved out to Atlanta to start my career. Came back home and taught at Southeastern, um, and then went over to Martin Luther King High as an assistant principal. And last year, spent one year as principal at Voyager High School. And I'm here. Of course, very excited to be here. I'm understanding that we've got a lot of growing to do, but I'm very excited about being a part of that process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, just a shout out, we've asked before and forget, uh, Ms. O'Neal is, in case you all don't know, our former, well, one of our former board members is our summer school director, and there's an update on that. She's doing really well. Um, as the summer school director, we have over a hundred kids participating right now, still calling a few and they're trickling in. Um, last week was their first week. A lot of extracurricular programming happening in addition to, in secondary summer school, um, in addition to the, uh, the academic side of things, so we're very excited about that and, and the, uh, maybe that isn't the right word, the quality that she is bringing from a leadership perspective to, to the summer program, so. Shout out to Ms. O'Neal and, uh, her, uh, commitment and dedication and Miss X to the summer program. Few updates on a couple of different things. Teacher interviews, we have, as you know, we have a couple vacancies that we are looking to fill. They've been posted since last week. We have gotten a number of applicants that have applied for, um, a lot of our positions, and it feels good to be a little ahead of the curve a little bit when it comes to that. Teachers get swooped up really fast right now, so uh, we'll be looking to start interviews for all of those positions beginning next week, and as we process, filter and process through them, so. Um, I want to say for all positions, in total, there might be over twenty applications submitted in our system online, so. Looking forward to that. We will keep you up to, up to speed on, on that process as it goes. Uh, David and I yesterday and Lou had a great meeting, um, with, we've been talking about when I first got here, and, and I think all of us know the value of having before and after school latch key, which they call SAC. Here, uh, we met with
Holly?
Holly from, yeah. What, what's her, uh, company?
Lou, do you know?
Yeah, anyway, so.
She, she's currently, um, supporting the Van Dyke School District.
Yeah, so we had a great meeting yesterday, and, and there's some momentum looking like we, we are going to be able to offer before and after school care as seminal, um, for our pre-K through fifth grade, um, in the fall, so. Keep you, I'll keep you in, in the loop on that as that grows. Head start, then we'll come back to those. Uh, bond update. Today, uh, we had a few of you were there, as well as, uh, some other team members from the district. We had our first kind of our preliminary bond conversation and meeting with our architects and our, our project manager and plan Moran, Nicole Blocker, who presented to you all before you all have met. And we visited both buildings, had more conversations and dialogue about the vision and, and the mission, the direction we want to go in um, with our buildings, and so, uh, really good conversation today. Um, as we plan moving forward and getting ready to really ramp up our marketing app, strategies, and our plan for going out for bond and maya, maya of next year, so, um, I'll keep you up to speed on those things. Roof update. Jen and I, um, have been in conversation and had a meeting with, uh, Bloom's Roofing Company about the roof next door. There was, as you know, initially, there was a lot of stuff, uh, back before we were all here, Jen and I. Um, there was a, uh, a quote given to replace the roof on the, the historical side of the building uh, for a two point four million dollars. Met with the roofer, um, had some conversation. Uh, they came back with a, a new quote to replace the, uh, the entire roof over there for two point three, uh, two point, a little under two point four million now. Um, we asked the, uh, roofer, could he go back to the table and give us another quote? One of the things that he explained, they did a number of tests, and from infrared, it was really amazing, uh, with the technology, how the technology is used nowadays. He uses infrared system with a drone that can pick up the humidity in the roof and know if there's water, and, and it was, it was phenomenal to see, yeah. Um, and so what they found, and what we know too, was that for the gym, um, the gym is in great shape. There's no leaks. That roof is, is really in good shape, so we asked him to come back because of our budget for the roof. Uh, we asked him to come back with a, a new number, um, without that for now. And my, my thought is, we get done, we need to get done. Bond passes, we'll finish the job and get everything, uh, done. And so, uh, he came back with a number that's, uh, I want to say two point one million. But there's still a, a pot of money that has to be allocated for contingency, which is significant, like two hundred thousand. So when they get into the work, if there are things that they find, it may go up. So that two point one is really two point three, and that is without an estimate. On the maintenance side of the building, um, there's significant, uh, mason, uh, damage, brick damage to the building, and that has to be fixed according to the roofers or it's pointless. So we're in the process of getting some numbers on what that, uh, what that'll look like, so. Right now, um, considering everything, we're, we're looking at about, I, I think we're still up to that two point three something, two point four, uh, to have. We, with the sale of King being, uh, final, um, waiting on, money hasn't transferred yet. Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, so the wire has been done. Uh, I updated you all, sent an email about, uh, the closing on King and, and what we've already had allocated for that, so we're just under two million, um, for the roof. And so we're going back to the roofer to say, hey, at this point now, you know, this is what we have, and, and let's see what we can do and get done. So I'll keep you abreast of those things and, um, as we, as we move forward. But I, we know at, at, at minimum, the high priority areas will be addressed, and, and they can start, uh, just as soon as August? Uh, September or something, he said? They have some dates possibly?
He was gonna check, but he was thinking September, October.
Okay, yeah.
Was, um.
There's a couple of windows for their team, and, and that could work and be, somebody asked this question in a, a previous meeting, that work can be done while kids are here. It won't interfere with anything. A couple of areas isolated and, and blocked off where they can get to what they need to get to, and be, considering that side of the building is not in use for the most part. It won't interfere with much.
And depending on weather, eight weeks to finish?
Yeah, about eight weeks to finish to turn it around. They always allocate a couple of rainy days in there, and, you know, so we thought, we were really excited about that, so. Any questions about that?
Yeah, can we give them a million dollars and then put the rest on the layaway?
I thought you were gonna say like after pay or, uh, something like that, yeah. I just appreciated them honoring that.
Negotiate that, you know, hey, give me, you know, with the end way play.
Yeah. I asked, it don't, it don't hurt. Um, so yeah, we're excited about that.
Just as you said, um, eight weeks to do the project.
Yep.
Um, September, weather is pretty good most of the time. October gets into the transition of rain, and so that eight weeks could, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be paid based on the weather.
Could, based on the weather, but, I mean, I, even at this, twelve weeks.
Yeah, oh yeah.
You know, I, I was impressed, I
Yeah.
We were surprised, I say, oh, okay, yeah. And then I'm thinking, he's gonna say something like next year or something, so, yeah. Anton Art Center, there's a new director at Anton Art Center, and David and I have a chance to sit down and meet with him and his team, and, uh, we got some plans in place and working on some things to have a better collabora- have a better collaboration and, and, um, relationship with the Anton Art Center and, and, uh, utilizing that, getting our kids over there and involved in experiences and, and working, uh, between the, the district and Anton Art Center here and there. Um, and incorporating the arts and even potentially, uh, some opportunity within art class through the art center. So a bunch of resources there, and, um, we're, we're working on that partnership, and we'll bring you more information on that as it develops. Um, enrollment, you, you know, we're always, um, focusing on enrollment, and, um, you approved some budgets for some, some enrollment, um, strategies. So commercials have been going, uh, radio ads on FM ninety-eight W J O B are still going. And now we're getting closer, so we're gonna start to get into our social media, uh, pieces. We shot some, uh, commercials today for some pieces, some clips to put together some advertisement that will go out on social media, um, and as explained in that campaign. There, our, our Moline group is doing, uh, the company that we use, they're, they're doing some geo fencing and, and going to be intentional with where this is pushed out to, community wise, so. Um, those, you'll start to see those things more and more as they go. Our, um, staff and student recruiter Karen Hines has been working uh, with the team on enrollment, um, and they've been doing a good job of being involved and trying to be proactive. We, uh, have a couple pop-up enrollment, uh, um, opportunities that's gonna happen in the community and other communities. So we'll be at Shady Side Park, we'll be at Carr Community Center, MacArthur Park, uh, where we'll go out to the community and do small site enrollments. As well as, uh, this area just, um, in that Detroit, in that eight mile borderline, um, that we're looking at maybe setting up a pop-up, enrollment opportunity down there too. You know about the Academy Award, um, partnership that we have with them and their, uh, eighth graders, future ninth grade students. We have confirmed, we, we're looking, we want about, we, ten, about ten students would have been enough to be, uh, to make financial sense and have a bus. Right now, we only have a confirmation, I think about five or six of those kids. Uh, we spoke with the transportation company, um, and if it's a small group like that, we still could potentially keep that promise to that community and those parents and, and send a van, which would be still cost effective and, and make sense, and I think that once we, people start to see these kids going somewhere, there'll be a lot of questions and, and, and intrigued minds of what's, where they going, what's going on, so. I'll keep you up to date on that, and I get you the dates for the pop-ups. Uh, I'll send them out to you.
Got a question. Yeah, a couple of questions, yeah. With the pop-ups, how are we gonna advertise that?
So, uh, good question. So we have, uh, Melas going out, um, old school way, but they're really nice car stock to the community homes, um, as well as our, our social media, Facebook and, and our robocall too, to our current families.
And second question regarding, um, what we've been doing with the, with the charter school academy.
Yeah.
Um, you said you have a commit from six, or will we be picking those students up at the school?
Yeah, gotcha, yeah. We will pick them up right on their campus
Yeah.
and transport them here and, here and, and back. We, you know, we're kind of, the reason we're looking at the pop-up on that, we know we get a lot of kids from Detroit anyway. The reason we looked at potentially doing the pop-up on that Detroit side of Eight Mile um, is because if anything, if we do a pop-up enrollment on, we, I looked at potentially doing it on Academy Award's grounds. But then that raises the conflict with, with my, my colleagues, because that's East Point and, um, Van Dyke's kind of area, so I don't wanna overstep that, but Detroit's fair ground, so. We'll see how it goes, and I'll keep you informed on those things. Um, any questions about the enrollment? We're getting applications in. One of the things that we talked about came out of, out of this meeting. Uh, we made an adjustment to our applicant, our enrollment application and included, um, to capture the data of how you heard about, uh, our district. So from our media, you know, to bring some, some data, uh, to see what's working, you know, and what's not, so. We'll be gathering that, and, and applications are, are coming in as we speak, so. Uh, Henry Ford Health Clinic, we talked about this earlier in the bond meeting, and, and, um, David, myself, and who was that yesterday? Alexis, our council, school counselor, met with the Henry Ford Health Clinic team. I mean, they have a team, about ten people, uh, from, from their, their grant writers or, you know, whatever, so. Um, one, one of the things that I've learned in, in the health clinic, uh, in order to keep the clinic and be compliant on their end, they need to see at least two hundred and fifty people a year. Uh, that number, our students have been, you know, our students utilize it, but it's underutilized, just to be honest, and, and that is not, uh, just for our students. That's why their house where they are, because outside people ages something to twenty-one um, can take advantage of those services for, we can't say for free, but for free. Um, and so we met to brainstorm and to get some ideas to better utilize that resource and make it more, um, efficient, or, and get more students and families to utilize it. The, the thing that I assessed in, in that first year was they're so far removed, uh, and that the staff there isn't really a part of our staff. And where I've seen those things where the nurses is known in the building by the kids, right? So we talked about our deals of getting the nurse to be integrated in the, in the building a little more, you know, and then, then she's not a stranger, right? And our kids have been taught, a lot of our students have been taught, you don't, don't talk, don't move, don't talk to anybody without me, you know? And, and that's okay, but at the same time, you know, we, we have things that we get caught up with because, I mean, from like administrations, right? Like students are behind, families are behind, and it's right here. You know, there's no reason why families aren't, parents aren't bringing their kids, and so we're gonna make them more, uh, a part of the, the, the district organization and, and not be older over there. And also, the proximity is good from a privacy perspective, but it's not really, um, conducive to, you know, a kid comes down to the office and they're sick. You know, you wanna be able to say, okay, the nurse is, is right here. Well, now we gotta get someone, human, uh, resource to walk a kid over there. And that kid may or may not make their way back over here once they leave, you know, so we talked about the, what that looks like. And, uh, so we put some things in place for next year where, you know, the, the nurse will be responsible for walking that student back over, because it's, I mean, it's two sets of double doors and IDs fight to get, even get there, which causes a problem and, and procedures in the building, and, uh, kids end up all over the place, so. Uh, we're just ironing out some of those things, uh, kinks to, again, make that, uh, better utilized. Bargaining update, uh, David and I and Jen met with, uh, the M E A, our, our union representative, teacher union representatives, and their, um, counsel, their, their attorney. One of the things that they asked for, they know the financial situation we're in and, and working out of. They, uh, they asked for, uh, pretty much a, a retention bonus, which we were like, okay. We thought we'd come asking for a million dollars, uh, but they asked for a, a retention bonus for each employee, for each teacher of a thousand dollars. That, that impact to us is, uh, was, I, I think the range was like forty-five thousand to something, maybe a little higher, uh, which we thought was reasonable, um, and so we're gonna look at, trying to honor that, but we counted with some other things and from evaluation, things that we want to do, um, to, um, one of the things that, if you don't know, one of the things that when a teacher, because of the, the union, um, guidelines and rules, when a teacher has a class that's over that allocate, allocation, uh, amount of students, they get extra money. And you've seen those, some of those financial statements, and who's this guy, why are they getting extra? Well, the thing that drove me crazy this year is we had teachers getting paid because they had a number of kids on their roster. But those kids weren't in that classroom every day. So we're paying you because you gotta overage your students in your class, but you really had never had those kids in that class at one time. So we got some conversation going back, back and forth, uh, with them about how can we make that fair? How can we balance that? Because that's, you know, we don't mind, uh, meeting them with a bonus, but you know, it won't be that impactful if we can stop some of the bleed on this other, this other money that's going out. That's really ridiculous, in my opinion, so. They're open to that and, and very, really good, um, relationship, I'll say, it would, for, from a, a negotiation perspective, very open-minded on their end and understanding of where we are, so. Looking forward to, uh, what that finally looks like, and we'll let you all know when, when those things are, are determined. Um, a couple of dates to remember, August twenty-second is our back to school bash. We would love to see you there as always. Um, if you were interested in volunteering, I know Ms. Cahoon, I know Mr. Rickman came through. I think, uh, everybody came through. If you're interested in volunteering, uh, reach out, David, who, who is it? Karen, Karen Hines, Karen Hines or David, we'll get you to Karen, if you're looking at, interested in volunteering. Uh, August twenty-sixth, just for your, uh, for your records, August twenty-sixth is our, our team, our staff is back, there's new hire orientation for new teachers. August twenty-seventh, all, all teachers are back in the district, and we have professional development all day. Uh, the morning with us, and then afternoons at their buildings, and then August twenty-eighth is, is all back and teachers in their buildings. And finally, um, Thursday, August twenty-ninth is our kindergarten open house. Now finally, I got two more things. August twenty-ninth is a kindergarten open house, so you're, you're invited to pop in too. And, uh, it's always good for the, the community of people to see you, um, outside of these meetings, and, and, and good for you to see them too, so. We encourage you to, and hope that you can make some of those things when, when they fit. Um, August fourteenth, we're gonna do a, uh, an official meet and greet for Mr. Vile. Um, that's a workshop day, I believe, as well, so before the workshop, we'll have an hour and a half or so um, for staff that want to meet and greet with Mr. Vile. We'll sit out in here and, and, and have an, an agenda, and then, um, our Um, for staff that wanna meet and greet with Mister Ville, we'll sit out in here and, and, and have an, an agenda, and then, um, our. Mrs. Spoder, our, um, parent, parent president of our parent group for the secondary, she and I have been coordinating. They wanna do a, uh, community and family meet and greet with him as well, so following the staff one. They're gonna, they're gonna host theirs and, and we're just gonna support them hosting that parent, so, uh, it will be rolling. Uh, head start, that we leased a couple of classrooms too in the old building on the first floor. Just, just so you know, if you heard, hear about it, they're having their, uh, a health fair, we're allowing them to use our cafeteria. From ten to one, they're gonna have a health fair, and, and again, all of our community and parents and, um, constituents are, uh. Able to attend and, and participate, to participate and take advantage of those resources. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mister Superintendent. Any questions, Mister Superintendent?
Lou, did I forget something? You're here, making me feel like I forgot something from G S R P. Nothing, were you alright? Okay.
Since there's no question, the superintendent, moving to agenda, item nine, board comments. Remember Jay Walker?
I knew you were gonna call me. Well, welcome to our new principal, we're happy to have you here, you are gonna love the club.
Thank you.
And you're gonna love our kids.
I appreciate it.
So, looking forward to it, and just to our students and families, enjoy the summer, enjoy your time together, and we'll see you soon enough. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
School supplies are already in the store.
Yes, girl.
Um, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And welcome to, Katie. Katie, right?
Oh, speech language, yes.
Speak, speak.
I don't know, yeah, okay, you got one on me, I gotta lock that.
Um, and that's really all I have.
Mister Walker?
Um, looking forward to the roof being done, that's been a long time coming. Um, looking forward to the back to school bash and even restart the next school year. Um, having the families and parents and things come back, um, filling the hallways, actually, in the classroom.
Mister Ville will take care of that.
Classmates being in halls, but, just looking forward to all the great things that to come, um, and that's it.
Thank you, Mister Walker. Doctor McFadden?
Mister Superintendent, thank you for your report. Well, well put. Mister Ville, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, Miss Katie, is it Katie or Katie?
Katie.
Katie Brewer.
Katie Brewer.
Katie Brewer.
Miss Brewer, Miss Brewer, we welcome you to the club too, we're gonna make an honorary club lights, and pretty soon they'll be bleeding gray and red, that's what we want. Uh, those are my comments.
Thank you, Doctor McFadden. Here we are in the middle of July, and for staff, students, parents, whatever you're doing, this volunteers, whatever you do. Are here to support, uh, our students' community schools. Enjoy your time away, go on vacation, several vacations. Work in a garden, if you don't have a garden to work there, come on over, I got plenty, plenty of room that's, and, and work to be done in my garden. Drive a convertible, let the wind blow through your hair. Rest and recharge, because summer does not last long, and we'll be back here. Um, dates that we talked about in August, you know, starting it all over again, so en- enjoy your time away. Rest and recharge, and we look forward to seeing you here, uh, in September, fired up and ready to go. The high school showcase as you pass in and out of the building. Uh, I don't know why it's still up, but we still have the pictures of the graduating class of twenty twenty-three. That, that showcase has been up over a year, and we have graduated classes of twenty twenty-four. And their pictures are not in that showcase. Those are my comments. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by member Jay Walker.
Support.
Seconded by member Dee Walker. Call the role players.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Doctor McFadden?
Yes.
Mister Rick?
Yes. Motion carries.